Are we good? All right, we will go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda?
Not at this time.
Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
ESAC County Schools empower all students to become responsive, productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. We'll take a minute now for public input on non-agenda items.
I have one item on Quinn. I was up here a year ago. Class of 1982, lived down by the piers. Retired ANSC geologist. We started a new speaker series at the library, Lakeview Library. There's a new conference room. And we're starting the second year. And I'm proud to announce this. I think it's a fairly impressive list. In October, October, these are all Saturday afternoons at two o'clock. Chuck Wong is going to be here. I think people know Chuck Wong. Iowa quarterback for five years, couple Rose Bowls, played in the NFL seven years, NFL quarterback. He's maintained an Iowa presence. He's originally from outside of Chicago and now lives in Oklahoma. Coach, Big Ten Network commentator. He can tell a good story. What I would tell the school board about him as the speaker would be, he and I are about the same age and I think he's always represented himself well. He's never gotten into trouble or anything. He almost won the Heisman. It was the closest win ever, at least at the time. He had all the, not just Big Ten, I think it was NCAA. He played five seasons, but virtually everything except the Tims. It was fascinating. So athlete coming in. And then January 4th, Valerie Hemingway. This is, she's born in 1940, so she's 84 now. She lives in out in Montana. And she was born in Dublin. She had, I just finished this a couple of days ago. Only a few of us were there. Except all three of these are at the library. And she was interested in journalism as a 19-year-old, 1959. She's the newspaper correspondent in Spain. She's sending back these articles. She gets the assignment to interview Ernest Hemingway. She didn't know him. There was no introduction. Meets him, goes to a restaurant, his, introduces herself. She is, she was his secretary and for two full summers, she was in Havana. The title is running with the balls, which is about as exciting as it gets. Traveling throughout Spain and France. And then went through his papers afterwards. Five years after he shot himself in 1961, Ernest Hemingway. She marries a son, Gregory. And they were married into the 1980s and had their own family. So she's a, she's actually a consultant in Ken Burns series. But it's looking forward to Valerie Hemingway. And then the third one, I'm also excited about. Her name's Charity Nebby. I just told the boss I'm living off the grid. But if you remember the year 2020, it seemed like there was news about every couple of minutes. And I turned the radio dial in my living room about that far, came across IPR. Never been so impressed with somebody's people skills as Charity Nebby. She's got a, anybody know her?
Heard the name.
IPR, 10 a.m. It's a show called Talk of Iowa. She's originally up by Cedar Falls in Waterloo, then Ogden. And then went to school names and started working at WOI. And then she's, part of her career was in Michigan. I think she's about 50 now. And so she's going to be here. And she's also got a show on Iowa Public TV. But anyway, that's the lineup for this year. Saturday afternoons and you have a potential audience for me that I'm aware of. I told the other boss, I'm not really, this probably isn't the time or place. But I, I don't think you can, you need outside influence. And there's all kinds of ways you can get that, either from books or from travel or assemblies or field trips or C Y Stevens. And this is one way to get that. And I was thinking, I knew more people who said, we didn't have to learn that or they didn't teach that. That's of course, 99% of learning is on your own. And it's making these connections away from school. And getting curious and looking things up every day for the rest of your life. And so thank you for listening to me and thank you for your work here. And I'm digging myself in a hole for that here. Well, thank you, John.
Yes, we appreciate the information.
Thank you.
All right. We will move forward then with the Board Secretary report.
Yeah, so I actually had a seminar I went to in Muscatine on the 11th. Put on by our auditors. So I thought it was a good use of my time. I learned a few things. One thing that she really touched on was segregation duties. And the importance that they have. The last note, whole point underneath that is fraud. And her point was if you really want to prevent fraud, not that I'm concerned about that, just saying. It's segregation's the duties is how you do it. And I was thinking, you know, with everybody in the office is new. So this is the time to kind of reevaluate how we do things and who does what? And make sure that we set it up right. So I'm going to use her recommendations to relook at how we do things. Then she also touched on bank reconciliations. We had some old outstanding checks that I need to look into. And we might have to put those into the Iowa treasure hunt thing. And then student activity accounts. Nate and I had met with some of the coaches and John to talk about kind of rebalancing our accounts. Some of them had negative balances, some of them had a lot of fundraising money. And so the good thing coming out of that was she basically said the state of Iowa says, once it's in the activity account, they don't care how you use it. Doesn't matter where it came from. So if we've got one account that's negative and another account's got a lot of money in it, we can go ahead and fix that problem. And there's no concern as far as the state is that that's wrong to do that. So going forward, we're going to try and keep a better watch on those funds and make sure that fundraising is occurring and activity count is maintaining a balance and not going down. Then as far as funds go.
Oh, sorry. Flipping back and forth here.
Our bank balances are still looking good. Nate asked about how income was up so much. Part of that, I think, is that we had some big expenses this year, like the playground and the air conditioning units at the elementary. Those checks have been cut, but they didn't clear the bank in June. So those balances should come back down. So it shouldn't be such a big increase here over here. That's basically what I got.
I had one question on the bills. The Carol control systems, there's the large expense that's actually up here at the top, normally in the general fund. That $180,000, it says maintenance supplies.
It shouldn't say maintenance supplies. That is the air conditioners. So those were paid for in July.
And that's because it's coming from the?
It's going to get reimbursed. So that's why it's.
Funds, okay. That's why it's general fund. Okay, it's just normally we don't see that many in?
Yep.
General fund, okay. Yeah, we probably should update that before it goes paper for the description.
Oh, yeah.
Instead of maintenance.
Yeah.
We should, if we can label that differently.
I've been having some trouble with the way we run this report. Descriptions are kind of.
Okay.
Not lining up correctly. So yeah.
Hi, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, any correspondence?
No correspondence.
All right, then we'll move on to administrative reports. It looks like it's just you tonight.
Just me in July. The principals are off contract. So few updates for the board. Construction update. The playground equipment has been installed up at the elementary. It's all there. It looks great. There is not a base underneath it yet. Our process to get this finished up, we are waiting on Florence's paving to come in. They come in next and they are going to mill down the existing asphalt and repave the whole area inside the fence. So that's fresh and new. And then cut a straight edge along where the poured rubber will be and the wood chips. And so then, once they're done paving, the poured rubber people come in, pour the, pour that. And then the wood chip people come in after that. So after there's a base under the brand new playground, it should be open for business and ready for kids. Florence told me August 1st, they're waiting for asphalt plant to open by April yet. So kind of at the mercy of a few people here on that. But if everything goes according to plan, it'll be ready for kids on August 23rd. So. But what is there, looks very nice. And the installers did a nice job getting it, getting it in the ground. Also off of the elementary building, the HVAC work is about 95% done. Carol Controls has done a great job on that. The rooftop units were set early June. And then they had to do all the ductwork and the wiring. So that is done. I was there today. We have air conditioning in the classrooms now. I'm sure the teachers and kids will appreciate that. Bus routes would be the next thing I want to talk about. We sent Brian to a transportation conference last week in Des Moines. Being that this is, it was his first year as transportation director going into his second year. As a district, we're going to reevaluate all of our current bus routes. Currently, we have six routes that serve our district. And pickup times vary quite a bit on the routes. And I told Brian that we just needed a system in place to figure out how to best utilize our six drivers with the number of kids and number of stops we have. We should not have one route that is thirty minutes shorter than another one. So the main concern that we're hearing is the kids that are south of Wall Lake spend a lot of time on the bus. And we're going to see what we can do to improve that. There are, there's software out there we can buy. There's companies you can utilize. But one of the things I'm going to do before we take that step is just ask area superintendents who has a good transportation director or somebody who's been doing it a while. And say, once you have, once you have your districts and once you have your stops, how do you decide? How do you create routes? Because right now Brian does not have a system to do that. I was informed in the past that our individual drivers kind of created routes. So I would like, I would like Brian to create routes and then make sure that they're equitable across our whole district. That'll, there'll be a few changes. No huge changes as far as where drivers go. We know people like certain drivers and we're not, we're not looking to move them around. But we want to make sure that the time on the bus is fair. Last week, I attended a leadership conference, a national leadership conference. And I was able to take away a lot of things from that. As far as all the way from school safety to just leadership items for school districts. And then one of the things that they talked about that people on the older side of things are kind of avoiding, myself included, is AI and what role is that going to play in education? You know, personally, I really don't like to talk about AI because I just think doing it right, knew yourself is the best way to do it. But basically what they taught us there is it's coming. And the kids are going to start using it. So where, how are you going to react to the school district? And so I think I picked up a few things there I can share with the staff. And actually there, yeah, I became more intrigued when they were talking about the teacher tools and how you can take a really good teacher and make him great, save him some time. You know, there's, there's things out there that generate lesson plans. Like you can type in your, you can put in your state standards and you can type in, my kids like Taylor Swift and it will generate a lesson plan that teaches them a topic that somehow incorporates Taylor Swift and generates it in like two seconds. So I mean, there's, there's just a lot of stuff up, out there that until I went to this conference, I had no concept of. So I appreciate the opportunity to go on that. Talked, talked to a lot of people from around the country, big school, small school. Just, just a good learning opportunity for myself. Registration, that'll be posted tomorrow. That'll be open tomorrow, posted tomorrow. We're going to run online registration for two weeks. And then after that, we'll have registration available in any of the, in the school offices for students. We'll be utilizing JMC again for that. We also added a few custom fields in there for transportation questions. Just so we can gauge that and see what our busing needs are across the district. Safety training, I've been working with the Sack County Sheriff's Office for training opportunity that will be held in August. It'll be part of our professional development here. One thing that we have to do annually is evaluate our emergency operations plan for the district. So I'll be working on that this month with local police department sheriff's office. And then from what I understand, ESAC has used Alice training in the past. We're going to continue on with Alice training and that'll be on August 20th. Our teachers will be here. That'll be part of professional development. We're going to make it available for our hourly employees if they wish to participate. Training will be in the morning and then there will be exercise in the afternoon. So that'll be, one of the things that I was told after the incident occurred in Perry, which was tragic, was we would like some more training. So we are going to give some more training. And hopefully that's beneficial to our staff. Custodial updates. Our custodial crews in both campuses have been working really hard this summer. Teresa in the elementary, obviously with the HVAC system has been on hold for a lot of those rooms. Now that that is kind of put back together, I was there this morning and she was shampooing carpets and getting them ready. So that's good. Tammy's been waxing floors here. It was nice we could have, have the board meeting in the library today as opposed to the gym. So she hasn't quite got to the hallway yet, but that's something I get to do. So they've been working hard and making sure we're ready for school in August. Staffing needs, last part of my report. Tomorrow, I'm conducting interviews for our building and grounds director. We ended up with about eight applicants for that position. Three finalists will be interviewed. And hopefully we will find a quality replacement to replace Mark Berry as he retired at the end of June. Our special education positions are still open. We're still seeking two teachers there. Those jobs have been posted since January 1st. I do not believe at this point in the game, we will hire anybody for those roles. We do have plans to address our student needs based on the staff we have. But we are still currently looking for two special ed teachers. Possibility of hiring somebody at semester if they graduate early after December. So we'll see what that tells. Spanish, no apps as well. Tony is currently looking into online curriculums. That was another thing that was discussed at the conference I attended is a lot of the foreign languages go into an online format simply because there aren't teachers to teach it. So a couple of different options we can look at there. He also is in communication with a retired local teacher. May be interested in teaching half time. And if, if we could do that, that would be the direction that I would prefer to go. But love to see what we can do there. Next thing.
It's not Lance, is it?
No. I would recommend Lance if he can, if he can teach Spanish.
He does not know how to teach Spanish.
So I've been finding all sorts of jobs from Lance.
Yeah, I'm sure, just keep them, keep them coming. Keep them off of me.
Also tells me yes in a lot of things too. Associates, this is an area where if there is anybody local in our community who's looking for a job, we are, we are in dire need of associates. Elementary is probably looking at needing four. High school is probably looking needing two. So that's total of six people. I did receive two apps today, so we're going to explore those. But the biggest thing a school can offer is a very good schedule. If you're, you know, if you have kids, you're off when they're off. And our starting pay, I think it's competitive with other districts around. So we are looking for associates. We are still looking for one more cook for Lakeview. And then a position that we'll be posting here in the next day or two. Through some discussions, Tyler alluded to the activity account. We are going to post, they're basically an activity contract, but for some concession stand managers. And so we're looking for one person for, for Lakeview Wall Lake, one person for Sack City. That'll basically manage the concession stands, take care of the ordering, do the inventory. I would like to get to a point where our concession stands are the same across the district. Sell the same food, have the same products. Along with this, there, there is a discussion that will probably come. Mr. McCullough has brought some opportunities to me if, and that we can discuss the board level through Coke and Pepsi. There's incentives if you sign with one of them for a contract. You can get money for your activity account, stuff like that. But what's going to happen is what's going to be different with our concession stands going forward is the money that's generated from those concession stands is going to stay in our activity accounts for athletics here. Previously to this change, a lot of that money was being earned by parents and it was going to after prom. In conversations with Steph Rupel, who was in charge of most of that and other people who have helped and, and, and been around for a while, the amount of money that after prom needed to spend was just excessive. And in talks with other school districts, most of the time they have a concession stand manager. They have their local sports teams work the concession stands under the supervision of a manager and all profit is returned then to their activity. So if basketball works tonight and they make 800 bucks, they now have $800 to buy stuff for basketball as opposed to those accounts going negative, which happened for quite a while. So basically that money that is earned in our concession stands will stay within our activity fund instead of going somewhere else.
Nate, one question on that, just as I've had. So like in prom, if they work, then they get that money for?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Whoever works that night gets, gets that, gets that money for working. Now, there is going to be.
And Tyler manages all that, right? Tyler will manage all that.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll have the money come in and obviously we have to pay for food and our drinks. But once that's made, all the profit will, will stay with that activity. And you know, there's been conversation in the past, what should the school be able to buy for athletics? And what should the booster club buy? Well, when our revenue source is only gated mission and we're paying officials and buying uniforms. And there are certain sports that just don't make money. Then we have no money to buy some of that stuff. And so we're hoping to get to a point where, you know, the school district can buy uniforms on a rotation. We can provide each activity with a budget from our gate account. And then that, that gate account will be supplemented, or their activity budget will be supplemented with their activity fundraiser. So if the budget, for example, let's say football, for example, our, our budget, we take our gate funds and we, and we can pledge $3,000 to football. And they fundraise 5,000 on their own, they have $8,000 budget to work with. So you know, I think McCullough is still going to do the cards and you guys know we fundraise a lot of stuff around here. This may help with the amount of fundraisers that different activities need, may not. But it's going forward, will help our activity account a lot.
And this includes like FFA, music, like all of it.
Yeah, I think what's, what we're going to see happen is those, those sports that need the money are probably going to sign up. As many events as possible. Though the largest grossing events that a school district has is football. There's no question about that. Those concession stands make a lot of money on a given night. So let's say high school wrestling would be a sport that doesn't necessarily make a lot of money. That has freehold expenses. If they could work a few nights at the concession stand here, it would go a long ways to their account.
What are you going to do if everybody tries to sign up for them?
That is what Mr. McCullough has been hired for. He will be, he will determine how that, how that works. That's the other thing, the, the coaches and advisors of these activities got to make sure they got people there. Kids and parents involved as a grill, to make sure that people are there and ready to keep it working. So.
So will this be like talked to in the community with, or will it just say, like to let parents kind of know? Like I'm just speaking for like, a lot of prom parents are really stressed out. So will they be educated or kind of told on, you guys got to sign up for this stuff? So then if you want, or how will it be communicated?
Hopefully they watch this board meeting.
Yeah. I'm just curious, I mean.
But so, so yeah, I, I think word has gotten out. When I approached, I've talked to Steph Rupel about this because she's kind of been behind the scenes for a while. And she was very much on board with this idea and said, the parents have already, they already know. She said, some already know it's coming because apparently a year or two ago, possibly chaps asked corollary to look into how other school districts raise money.
Yeah.
And so she did that and reported back that there's just, what we've been doing here is different than most other places. Not that it's been bad, but the question was asked, if we're buying TVs with that money and giving them away at prom to kids who may or may not want them, is that a good use of, of public money? And that's the discussion that came out is, is money that's generated at a sporting event, public money? I would say yes. So how do we best spend public money? Buying kids TVs at after prom or putting them into our athletic programs? So that would be the justification for this. And so how this gets communicated, I think through Mr. McCullough and Steph Rupel. I think word will spread real quick. But if prom parents are concerned, I would encourage them to talk to Mr. McCullough and Steph. Because I believe past practice, tell me if I'm wrong, was concession stand money. And then they also went out to the community and asked for donations for prom.
I haven't done proms. I don't know.
That is true.
Yes, so not only.
Yes.
So we were spending a lot of money on prom. Prom is important. I'm not going to go on record and say it's not, but I'm just saying a lot of fun for being spent on prom. And that can probably be done a little bit differently. Any other questions about that? Okay. All right, that concludes my report. I took about 50% of the meeting, I'm sure.
All right, doesn't look like we have any discussion items, so we'll move on to action items. So first up are minutes, board bills and policies for consent agenda. Are there any questions on those?
I'm making motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is granting FSA bank access to Eagle Ridge.
Yeah, so I'll speak to that. I don't know if everybody saw the actual document that's in the board packet. But basically Eagle Ridge is the company that has been doing our partial self-funding. So when employees have medical bills that should be covered by our insurance, but because we are partial self-funding, they need a reimbursement. They're the ones that validate that and then send them the reimbursement. So they're taking care of our flex spending as well. But in order to do that, they wanted access to a bank account so that they could do an ACH themselves the next day. So I submit my receipt for my classes. They approve it and then they send the ACH the next day. So we set up a separate, separate bank account that's only going to have money that's been deducted from people's paychecks for their flex spending in that account. So that they have, would have permissions to make those reimbursements. I added a note to this that says if they're going to run out of money, because that's a possibility. Because somebody could get reimbursed for their $5,000 surgery at the very beginning of the year. Would you have all that money in there? They would contact me and then we would move money from the general fund into that. And that's what the auditor's sole to do, is to just fund it with the deductions unless we're going to go negative. And then this document is just what the. And then this document is just what the, the bank wants in order to give permission to Eagle Ridge.
So you're the bank specialist, what do you think?
It's fairly typical. I would just want to make sure that we're tracking, which I'm sure they will, but I'm assuming they provide accounting so that if somebody would cease or no longer be employed, we would be tracking that back and collecting.
I'll keep track of it, they'll keep track of it and, yeah.
Okay. That looks good.
Any other questions on that?
Okay, so I believe we need a motion to approve that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the FSA bank account access to Eagle Ridge. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the break-fix insurance, which I believe we discussed last month.
Yep, discussed this last month. And also talked about the premium that was been, that has been proposed in the district. Last month I talked about recommending this as a superintendent. It just, one, provides insurance on all of our electronic items, anything that plugs in. If it goes bad, we can put a claim on it. Second thing that's favorable to just accounting and school finance was the premium is paid out the management fund and our reimbursement goes back in the general fund, so it provides some flexibility with that. Our premium for this upcoming year on this program is about sixty thousand dollars. Which is, is, we have this quoted, there's options. There's, you know, there is the Cadillac, which is a hundred and forty-five thousand that included your cooler, walking coolers in your HVAC system. And then we had them requoted on, on just our electronics and things that plug in. So for instance, if all of a sudden my smart board quit working tomorrow, just won't turn on, we submit a claim and buy a new one. And the insurance company pays for it, so it protects our assets. As opposed to buying, us buying the items, the insurance company will buy the items and reimburse us. Also, the other thing with our copiers and printers, this plan includes all of the toner for our copiers and also if a kid breaks their computer and Robert or Yourtech ends up fixing it, that time is, is billable to the insurance company. So it doesn't cost us that time. There's multiple ways that this is a good idea. The biggest thing is for Yourtech and our custodial crew to utilize the paper, utilize the plan and do the paperwork. If they do that, we're going to be in good shape, so. That'll be discussed with our new building and grounds supervisor, whoever that is. And Robert is already aware of it and has been doing it in other districts.
Any questions on that?
Need a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the break-fix insurance.
Second. There's a motion in a second to approve the break-fix insurance policy. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up are legislative priorities.
All right, they are doing this different this year. And the good news is I've already had the pleasure of working through this new process with Ariva, so it should not be too, too hard. Basically IASB, which we are a member of, every year calls for legislative priorities, which you're familiar with. In the past, we have went through different topics and picked our top two ideas. This year, they basically have created a bunch of mission statements on what IASB should be doing as far as legislative priorities go. And, which is fine. And then the questions to us are, is there anything that we do not want to check in these boxes as far as our priorities are outlined? So for instance, in number five, and this is what I actually submit when we submit these, it says, we believe that literacy is the building block for student achievement and student success. And then it asks us in the school board, is there any part of, any of these items that should not be a part of their mission statement? So I am willing to guess that student achievement, preschool, early literacy, English learners and special education are probably important to our school board.
Yes.
So our questions would be is if the board wants to include the area education agencies as part of that initiative. Along with all the rest of them as well. Obviously, there's been a lot of changes with the AAs this year. And I know the, the school board association is probably going to advocate heavily to keep, to retain the services that they have. So that would be an option to click that box if we want. The rest of them are pretty self-explanatory. Whether we believe teacher recruitment, licensure is important. Teacher professional development retention is important. The only, the only ones that, just letting you know that, are we, we discussed this. Private school choice, do we want IASB advocating for that? You know, as a public school, more than likely not. And there is another one up here about homeschool education, if that's a priority for us or not. So a very different process this year. They just want us to check these boxes if it's important to our board. So I would pose the question, are there any boxes you don't want me to check?
What was the last one again, charter schools or private schools or whatever?
Yeah, private school choice. Would that be a priority? And I would say as a public school.
I would say that's not a priority to me.
Using public tax money to pay tuition to a private school is probably not one of my priorities. Okay, we will not be checking that box.
The homeschooling thing, we, there's been homeschool forever. I'm, I'm fine with, I don't know if that's a priority, but I'm fine with leaving that alone. That's my personal opinion, but.
The other thing I will say, and this is not, not a knock against IASB, is every year this is targeted at a school district and legislation just happens, so.
I was going to say, it doesn't seem to change.
So I don't, yep, I don't think racking our brains on this for a while is going to change the world.
No.
Yeah, I'd say leave homeschool and private school off. I'm good with everything else.
Yeah. Same.
We had a motion on that or not?
Yeah, just a motion to approve our educational priorities and I will submit, submit using the direction I have to put it in from the board.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the IASB legislative priorities as so discussed.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the priorities. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I do not believe we have any personnel items tonight.
Not this month, there will be a few coaching ones next month.
Okay.
So that leads us into.
I think needing to set our meeting?
Yeah, next board meeting, yep. And so our next board meeting, third Monday of the month would be August nineteenth. That meeting will have a few items on it, such as approving our handbooks for the year. And then I don't know how much you follow the legislation through last year, but the state is going to be taking a much stronger stance, or the intention is to take a much stronger stance on student attendance and truancy. So with that, we will have to adopt some board policies that align with the state's initiative. Will also be in our handbooks. And, and, and it's, it's good, it's a good thing. But basically, we got to come up with a process. If a student misses X amount of days, what does the school district do? And it starts with a letter, then it's a phone call, then it's a home visit. And then, and then we follow the process and go to the county attorney. Why is the state doing this? Because after two thousand twenty, they have seen overall absenteeism in schools skyrocket. Like from seven percent on average to like twenty-two percent on average after COVID.
Are we on trend with that?
Yeah. Yeah, so the state is, is basically saying, we have this law, the kids are supposed to attend school, now we're going to enforce it. So I have spoken to our county attorney and he's all in favor of doing it. But the biggest thing is the school needs to do their part first. And we have every intention of doing that. We just got to make sure our policies align with what we're going to do. So that'll be a discussion next month. And IASB has given us policies to approve. But we just need to make sure all of our language from board policy all the way through student handbook is the same.
Same time, six-ten here.
Does August nineteenth, six-ten work for everybody?
Yep.
Yes, that's easy. Okay.